I'm gonna call this special meeting of the Board of Equalization of Oklahoma County to order. Today is Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. It is nine thirty. We have a full house. Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
Mr. Teresa Sellers.
Present.
And I'm Eleanor Thompson. Today, we have five items on the agenda, and they're all by phone. And item one is B O E number one twenty-four. Zachary Patillo.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, let's find it three times.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Hi, this is I.
Hi, this is Ms. Thompson calling from the Board of Equalization. How are you doing?
I'm doing just fine. How about yourself?
Doing just fine. Have you ever appeared in front of us before?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay. Well, we're all here. All three of us are here. And this is how this is gonna go. You're gonna go first, then we're gonna hear from the assessor, and then we're gonna give you the last word. Now, this is an appellate review, meaning you've already had a chance for an informal with with the with the assessor's office. And so we and we are aware of what they have made their initial determination as being. So you're gonna tell us why their there's assessment is wrong and what you think we should set the fair market value. I should tell you that we are not concerned with your taxable value or your taxes. We are concerned with fair market, which is a guesstimate of what a willing buyer and a willing seller is willing to pay for your property.
Okay.
Okay, and we will the three of us have reviewed all of the information that we got from you. But if you try to give us something that you didn't give the assessor during the informal, we're not gonna consider unless they don't care. If they don't care that you're giving us some information. Now, what I have here is your property is located at sixty-fifty South Harrah Road in Newhaw. And that the assessor first said that he valued your property at seven hundred and five thousand two hundred and eighty. And during the informal, uh, for reasons he will tell us when we get to the assessor's view here, he lowered the value to four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-three. But I understand that you've not completed the outside anyway, and the driveway of your building, and that the building is not completely finished, and you think it's only worth fifty thousand dollars. And you you gave us a lot of information, which is like, were you giving us receipts for everything you have spent thus far on the building? Is that what you were presenting us with?
Um, I'm not sure if I I don't believe I included any receipts, um, for the building. I, um, I believe I gave them to the, uh, the assessors. Um, and then it wasn't even receipts. It was just a general, uh, I I put the numbers together myself. Uh, and then just sent that number to them. Um.
Well, tell me, have you, how did you arrive at fifty thousand as a fair market value of this?
Um, so at the, uh, just trying to keep things fair and equal across the board for taxpayers in Oklahoma County, there's several properties um, at the corner of Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street and Luther Road, um, where they are they're building similar sized building on each of those lots. And they are at the same stage in their building process design. Um, they've had reasons for held up, hold up, holdups on their end. And for the past four years or three years, they've been, uh, their taxable market's thirty-eight thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-four thousand. Um, and they're we're we're in the same boat essentially. And so until I I believe what they came up with with the the four hundred thousand, I believe it's fair going forward. But with the building not being completed, I would just like be treated the same uh, and and paying a lower tax, uh, property tax until the building is completed. And I can't even put a driveway in because they're widening Harrah Road, uh, in front of my property. And part of the negotiations, um, I asked for them to include a new concrete driveway when they do the project. They declined it. Uh, and essentially said, if I build a driveway uh, to my property, that they're not going to replace it once the project takes place. Uh, so therefore, we're not be able to even have access to my property from Harrah Road. Uh, I would like for my property tax to reflect what the other, uh, property on Twenty-Ninth Street, Luther Road, uh, and just be treated the same way.
Okay, now, at the beginning, I told you, we don't concern ourselves with your taxes. We concern ourselves. When you get your statement, there's two values on there. One is the market value and one is the taxable value. And you've you you've concerned yourself with the taxable value and your ultimate tax that you pay. And we concern ourselves with fair market value, which I said is what a willing buyer and seller might would agree upon is the cost or the value of the of your property. Are you able to use your property at all?
Uh, yes, but I have to go through, uh, my dad's property to get to it.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not currently using it as a, uh, as a shop yet. I wanna be able to have everything completed before I start moving things in there. I want it to be a hundred percent ready, and it is not.
Zach, uh, this Brett Towns. My could, my question is, December thirty-first, what was the percentage of the building that was completed at that time?
Um, I would say eighty percent.
Okay. Um, and you weren't using it? Uh, you didn't, is this building under a per building permit?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, and the building permit is still open?
Uh, yes, it is.
It's not closed? Okay. Um,
do you have an operating phone in there? I mean, what do you do in there with the building thus to this moment?
I don't do anything in there. That's my point. Um, I have another shop on my dad's property that we, uh, we use together, uh, for like storage and things like that. Um, currently, I don't use that building. Uh, eventually, I'll have offices, a warehouse, and a little showroom area. But I do not have a phone in there. I don't, I don't even have internet, uh, connected to it. I do have power. Um, I don't have gas. Uh, that's been a whole other kick up with, maybe anyways, but uh, like I said, I don't want to work I don't wanna halfway work out of it. And then when it comes time to move all of my stuff in there, then I have to move and rearrange and cause whole other problems. So that's why I haven't even tried to work out of there until I can one hundred percent move in. Um, I don't have steps into it yet. Uh, and like they don't have access to it from Harrah Road.
Okay, if I if I walked up to you now and offered you fifty thousand dollars for the property, would you sell it to me?
Well, I don't think that's a fair, uh, way to look at this.
Well, but I want you to understand that we're talking about the market value of your property, not the taxable value. Those are two separate sums.
I I understand that, but what's the difference with the property on Southeast Twenty-Ninth and Luther Road? They have it valued at thirty-eight thousand dollars, and it's it's a building that's guaranteed is a bit of ten to twelve thousand square feet.
Now, what 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 is the thirty-eight? Is that the taxable value or the fair market value?
That's the taxable value. Okay, so fair market value is fifty-one four twenty-one. So fifty-one thousand, same thing.
The issue is, is this tab came off.
Okay, well, let me hear from the assessor, and then I'll give you the final word.
Sure. So we ran this on for full value back in twenty twenty-four is when we thought that it was fully complete. After the hearing in twenty twenty-five, we figured out the office still needed some work done, and it wasn't occupied yet. So the hearing officer added a twenty-five percent function, uh, functionality adjustment to the building tab and used a newly calculated mark to address the cost values and your hearing value, which is how we arrived at four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-three.
Is it a little unusual to start the ass or the, uh, fair market value and put it on the rolls when it's not a hundred percent complete and not occupied?
Yes, it is. We thought it was, uh, a hundred percent complete as of twenty twenty-four from the aerials.
Right.
I don't think that we had access to the property in twenty twenty-four. No, we had a picture of the gate, but that, okay, so that was pictured in twenty twenty-three. And then twenty twenty-four, we ran it off full value, assumed that it was complete. And then after the hearing, we, he sent in some pictures that said that suggested otherwise, which is why we adjusted it back down to the four hundred and thirty-five thousand eight sixty-three. His original, uh, fair market value on his original hearing was at four hundred and twenty-five thousand. We got pretty close to that.
I guess what I'm saying is if I'm building.
It's what he asked for?
It's what he asked for, four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
If I'm building a building and it takes three years to build, you're not taxing it in two years. We're not, we're not establishing a fair market value in two years. We're establishing it when it's completely done and it's occupied and in use.
Yes.
This building is not that at this point, is it?
No.
And that's why you dropped it from the seven oh five down to the four thirty-five?
Yes.
I guess my thought is, should it even be, should it even be on the rolls until it's completely done and occupied, except for the land?
Do you have a separate valuation here on the land?
Uh, the land value is at fifty-four thousand four fifty.
Um, sir, did did you first agree to the four hundred and or assert that the value was four hundred and twenty-five, not seven oh five?
Uh, so whenever I send in the appeal form to them, I did put four twenty-five because I calculated, uh, you know, the material that had it and things like that. Um, and and I will say, I believe I shouldn't have put that. I believe it was a mistake because after I further, you know, did some research, I've never been I've never done anything like this. And so once I looked into it and I saw that that property on Twenty-Ninth, how that was being handled, I just didn't see or understand why I'm being treated different when my building is not completed.
Did you respond to him in the in the informal, uh, to his comparison to the other buildings in the area?
Uh, I was not the hearing officer at that.
Okay.
You know.
I do have, all I have is the note.
Okay.
Do you have any idea if they took into consideration the lack of access to the building when they lowered it?
Um, it doesn't seem like they didn't take that into consideration according to the note. Can you pull up that?
Sure.
It does, we consider that to have access. Usually, we would have, we would consider that.
But that's through my my father's property. I have, uh.
So you don't have access off of that, uh, off, see. When this is all said and done, where do you intend to put your paved driveway? Which street? On Harrah or on?
On Harrah Road, because my property doesn't touch Fifty-Ninth Street. I played on foot. I I submitted with my permit process, and when I, uh, got the property changed to commercial from from agricultural, um, I submitted a site plan, and the driveway would be located at the, uh, northwest corner of the property.
Are they requiring you to match it up to Florence across the street?
Uh, they are not, no.
But your contention is you couldn't sell it because you don't have a right of access to it.
I I would, I would think that would be a fair assessment, yeah.
That there there's no mandatory easement? There would not be a mandatory easement situation, easement of necessity? I'm I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Tell you.
Put the, put your pointer on his building. Is that his building?
Yes, right here.
And and where is Harrah?
Harrah Road is right here.
Oh, and that's where he's gonna put his driveway?
I mean, a driveway right here.
Oh, I see.
I don't understand why.
And where's his daddy, which, where's his daddy's property?
It's where that dirt ripper's coming up.
Yeah, my dad, my dad's interest is off of Fifty-Ninth Street.
Ah, okay.
And his, his property is, uh, his property surrounds mine. Uh, so there's a gas station to the north side of me. My dad's property is on the south side and the east side of me.
Okay.
And I I enter through the east side of my property from his property.
Okay. You have any more questions?
Let me see.
Okay, we're gonna meet tomorrow and make our decision, and you will get notice in writing what our decision is.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Oops, I'm not on. All right, number two. Texas Tax Protest, is that next?
One forty-five. Mm-hmm. Is this the Arizona question?
Blair. Downs.
Yes.
Clear preview. Beep. There's two crunches. This is the first.
This is Blair.
Yes, this is Ms. Thompson calling from the, um, Board of Equalization of Oklahoma County. Are you the owner that's gonna do the hearing?
I'm the agent, yeah.
What's your name?
Blair Printy.
Okay. Okay, Blair, all three of us are here. Have you appeared in front of us before?
Um, I don't think so. I think I did it in a in a different Oklahoma county, but.
Okay, well, um, this is our B O E number one forty-five, which is eighty-four hundred North Earth Expressway, roll number one four zero nine thirty-three zero five seven. The way this works is the assessor has valued, started out at four million eight twenty-two nine forty, during the informal lowered to four million four hundred and seventy thousand fifty-two dollars. I show that you would like for us to value this property at four, a flat four million dollars. So we're gonna let you go first and tell us why you think the fair market value of your property is four million, and then we'll hear from the assessor, and then we'll give you the final word. We will not decide today. We will decide tomorrow, and you will be notified in writing of our decision. Lastly, let me say to you that this is an appellate review, so we will not receive new information today that you did not give to the assessor unless the assessor hears it and doesn't object. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, um, and I also show that this property for twenty-four was valued at three million three hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight eighty. And in twenty-three, two million seven hundred and sixty thousand. Um, you purchased this property in March of twenty-four for three million twenty-five thousand dollars, and you now say the value is four million. You can explain to us why.
I actually saw a letter in the package, I believe, from her stating that they believe it's worth four million two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, is that where you are?
No, I I meant four million, and I can go ahead and explain if you want me to.
Okay.
Um, and just to confirm, you'll have my evidence in front of you, correct?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanna make sure because I'm gonna be walking through that. Um, so the first page of my evidence is obviously just, you know, the the, uh, the formal appeal form, where I requested the value of four million. I think you've already stated where the value was originally assessed at and where the county moved to informally. Um, so if we move to page two, this is kind of my explanation of how I got to that four million dollar valuation. So it's kind of a mixture of two different parts, right? So the first part of that is is taking into consideration the purchase price. Um, so the purchase price, like you said, in March of twenty twenty-four, this property was purchased for three million twenty-five thousand. There were improvements to the property, so we're not quite looking directly at that purchase price since it has been improved since the purchase price. Uh, the county estimates those improvements to be about one point two million. Um, so if you take into consideration the sell price plus the improvement, the total value, um, based on that would be four point two million, uh, twenty-five thousand. Um, however, I'm also gonna be looking at the income approach. The reason I'm doing that is because, um, obviously, this is a commercial property, so if a prospective buyer is gonna be purchasing this property, they're gonna be looking at how it performs based on income. Um, and then also the improvements that happen to the property, they're more so like lethal improvements. So they're really, uh, tailored to the tenant that's currently in it, which is my client, Crunch Fitness. Um, whereas like if a prospective buyer were to purchase it, they may not need it to be outfitted the same way that a gym needs it. Um, they may just tear out all of that improvement and kind of use it for a retail space. So I do think it's important to consider both, uh, you know, give some consideration to the purchase price improvements, but also take into consider the income approach because, you know, that's that's what a prospective buyer is going to be looking at. Um, so based on that income approach, the value, my opinion of value would be three million eight sixty-three. So what I did is I kind of combined, I just averaged those two values that were considering both methods. So my overall opinion of value is four million.
Okay.
Um, if we move to pay the next page after that, this is just the county's, uh, you know, website where it confirms the purchase price and the amount of improvement that that the county says there is. And then my next page, um, whenever I was working this property informally, I had submitted an income workup to the county. They came back and and sent me their income workup, which wasn't too far off from where I was at, so I just figured I might as well just provide what, uh, their income approach is something that I agree with. Um, and, uh, the, uh, let me just get into it. So essentially, this workup is from the county is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And this is what they had provided me during the informal. Um, and so this property is thirty-four thousand square feet. They estimated about eleven dollars triple net rent, um, which is is pretty aligned with with these types of properties. Um, they estimated a five percent vacancy, uh, ten percent expenses, it's triple net, so obviously the expenses are gonna be pretty low. And then an eight point five percent cap rate to come out with a, um, three million eight sixty-three um, valuation based on income. So that's coming directly from the county. And then I think that was it for the evidence of this one. So like I said, we're just looking at the income valuation and also considering that purchase price plus improvement to get the overall value of four million.
So can you explain why you changed it from four point two to five in the letter that was signed by you to the four million?
So I guess I'm kind of confused where that where that number is coming from. I think maybe I originally had had done that during the informal process, but then whenever I was talking with the county and saw that their own income method came down to three point eight, I didn't think it was fair to just be at a flat, or, you know, to be at this four point two million dollars. I thought it would be important to actually consider the income as well.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I have a note that says that assessor said no actual income information data was supplied to them from you.
Yeah, so this property is really interesting. It's actually, um, my my client, there's no actual it's a, so my client isn't isn't just a tenant. They actually own the building, so they're not, they wouldn't be paying rent themselves. Um, so we're kind of looking at an estimated income based on like, you know, if a purchaser were, or you go prospective buyer were to purchase this property, what would they estimate the rent to be at?
Okay, let me hear from the assessor, and then I'll give you the last word.
Yes, she is, uh, correct that we did do a pro forma, uh, income approach according to market parameters, arriving at an income indicated value of three million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand one thirty-nine. Um, the sale that occurred was for three million twenty-five thousand, and then there were improvements of approximately one point four million estimated. Um, so that brought uh, that brought, that's where she's getting the four million two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Originally, the property was actually valued at three point four, and we added the improvement to that. So the original was around four point eight million.
Mm-hmm. You're saying you, three point four rather than the sales?
Yes, yes. Uh, it was at three point four, and then we added to the improvements.
Right, but the sales was three point two.
The sale was three, was.
Okay.
On this one, I am willing to accept the four million two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Just hold on a second. Then I'm gonna entertain a motion to set the fair market value of B O E number one forty-five at four million. Help me out, assessor, four million.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty five thousand.
I just wanna make sure that you're good. We said four million twenty five thousand, I say, you know, four million two hundred and twenty five thousand, you're good with that? Representative?
But sorry, I thought he said he was good at four million.
Four million two hundred and twenty five thousand is what he said.
Okay, then never mind. I, I, for some reason I thought he said he was good at four million.
You're not agreeing to four million two hundred and twenty five? Ma'am?
No, I, I, no, I think the thought should be four million. Sorry for the confusion, I thought for some reason he had just said four million.
And I'm not sure that I answered the argument for why it should be four million then. It was, you had the one point two million in improvements.
Add, you have to add it on to the purchase price of three million twenty five.
Right, that's the four point two, but where did you get to the four million? I know you said you used some of the assessment valuation of three point eight, so did you, did you do the average between the four point two?
I did, yes, to consider both methods of the appraisal. And the reason I didn't fully consider just the purchase price and improvement is because these are more so lethal improvements, so they're, they're directly built to house Crunch Fitness, whereas, you know, if a big box retailer came in and wanted it to just be a retail space, they would have to tear out all of that stuff. They wouldn't be considering those types of improvements as part of, you know, the value that they would be purchasing it for.
Let me ask you if you would accept four million twenty five thousand?
I mean, yeah, I, I think that's.
Would you, would the assessor?
I can, I can, I can do that.
Um, I'm pretty strong on four million two hundred and twenty five.
Okay. You guys have any more questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the, we'll, we'll make our decision tomorrow and then you do.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna close BOE number one forty five and are you the representative for BOE one forty six, one two five oh eight, North Maine?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to that one now. And that's row number one four six eight six four zero seven zero. And the assessor has this valued at four million three hundred seventy six thousand six hundred and forty four. And I have that.
No, I had five million in it.
Five million three seven six six four four. Okay, and you, you brought it at three million seven six three in September of twenty three, but you're asking now that we set the valuation at four million seven six eight six four nine?
Yes, that's correct.
And this is the fitness center?
Correct.
Okay, and I have also that they said that you supplied no income data and your response is probably gonna be the same as it was on the other.
It is, yeah, it is. They, they own the property.
Okay, tell me how you arrived at, um, four million seven six eight six four nine?
Okay, so, so for this one, we're looking at the income method again. Um, I know that this property was purchased and then obviously there's gonna be some lethal improvement, but I think my argument still stands from the last one that we should be looking at income. Uh, this income's a little bit different than the last one. I think this property was bigger than the last one, so I think I had just moved the triple net rent a little bit lower since that, you know, as you're looking at a bigger property, the triple net rent will, will go down as opposed to a smaller property. So that's kind of what we're looking at here. So if you look at my income approach, um, this property is forty nine thousand square feet. I use ten dollars and twenty five cents triple net. I think on the last one I was using eleven, so like I said, just kind of economies of scale with this one being a, a bigger property. I use the standard five percent vacancy, uh, ten percent expenses and then just the typical three percent for management, three percent for reserve, which is really standard for these types of properties. Um, and then a cap rate of eight point five percent, which is the same cap rate that the, the county had used on the other one. Um, and so that brings the total income valuation for this property at four million seven sixty eight. So that is where my opinion about it came from. Um, if you go to the next attachment, this, this is just some CoStar data that, that I provided about the subject property. Um, the, the first page of the CoStar data is just kind of showing that this property was purchased in twenty twenty three for that three point seven, um, and then kind of tells you a little bit more about the property where you can see a picture of what it has looked like before my client had moved into it. Um, the next page after that is the building overview, um, where you can see on the right-hand side, it'll estimate the rent, the estimated rent is between nine dollars and eleven dollar triple net, and so I'm ten twenty five would fit right, right in that estimated rent for this type of property. And then the next attachment that, that I provided is actually how I got to that ten dollars and twenty five cents per square foot. It, I found two active leases for properties that are similar to this type of property, they're both retail, um, large base type of properties. The first one is, um, a twenty three thousand square foot property at nine dollars per foot. Um, and then triple net, and then the second property is thirty one thousand square feet at twelve dollars per foot. And then I just averaged the two to get the ten dollars and twenty five cents, which falls right in line with the eleven dollars we had seen in the last one. So based on that information, once again, my value based on income is four million seven sixty eight.
Now, is there a reason that you didn't take into consideration the purchase price plus the improvements like you did on the last one?
Yeah, the last one was purchased in twenty twenty four, this one was purchased in twenty twenty three. Um, so they've had like a full year of, well, the, the purchase price just isn't as relevant, it's a little bit older. Um, and then also they've had a full year of, I guess, if, if this property was paying rent, they would have had a full year of actual rent. So I thought it was important to kind of take into consideration the, the income approach.
And then I saw another income worksheet in here. I'm assuming it was the assessor's income worksheet at five point four eight three. So I'm assuming that you're just, you just don't agree with the assessors this time like you did last time?
So I, I don't see, I don't, I don't see what you're talking about.
Um, you didn't see the assessor's, uh, income approach worksheet when you did the informal?
Yeah, I'm looking at my evidence. I just see my income approach and then what I have. But I, I just am not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, well, I'll let the assessor speak to it and then we'll come back to it.
Blair, do, do you have a, do you have a valuation on the improvements? I know you didn't use that approach, but do you know what the improvement, what the cost of the improvements were?
No, I don't.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Yeah, so the current valuation applied includes both the property sales price, the price plus, uh, the value of any new improvements or remodels. Uh, we did run an income approach pro forma, again, according to market parameters, arriving in an income indicated value of five million four hundred eighty three thousand one seventy one, which does support the current value.
Was that for the, to, um?
It should have been.
Right, and she, and I have here that she did not give you any income data.
No, there, there is not gonna be any income data for this one.
Okay.
Trying to see what the big differences are here. Because you used eleven per square foot, it's ten point five. I've used five percent vacancy.
Well, if, if, okay, I, I, so your sole reason for not calculating this the way you did the other one is you'd be right at the, um, assessor's valuation if you added your one point five to your, uh, to your.
Well, because there's, there's a few different reasons, right? The other one, I considered the purchase price because it was a twenty twenty four purchase, so it, it just was very relevant to that one. This one was a twenty twenty three purchase. So last year we would have already considered it in our, like, valuation for it, um. And then also in terms of the rent, why I'm not at eleven dollars rent, this one is a bigger property, so I just didn't think that eleven dollars was fair for this one if we're using it for a smaller property like we did in the other ones. So that's where I used the ten twenty five. It's not too far off from eleven, um, but I did bring some of these comps to support that ten dollars and twenty five cents valuation.
You're absolutely firm on your four million seven?
I mean, I, I would be amenable if, if you give some consideration to the income method that I provided.
It did look like that permit was pulled in January twenty four, so I'm assuming most of those improvements were done in twenty four. When did that facility actually?
I don't have the, the open date in front of me.
It's right around the corner from me. I drive by it quite regularly and I'm trying to, I actually have a friend that joined it, so I can find out anyhow.
I could pull it up.
Yeah, and, and also I think my argument kind of still stands on why I don't love the method of taking the purchase price and adding the improvement. These improvements were, were directly for a gym. Like, think of, think of all the mirrors that are on the walls, the type of like flooring that a gym would need, the architecture fees. You know, prospective buyers would maybe look at that as a downfall, they'd have to rip out a lot of that stuff, you know, depending on what type of tenant they are, so. I just, I, I think that look, or at least giving consideration to the income method is important for these types of properties.
Right, you have anything?
Okay.
Okay, you have anything further? Nope, okay, we will, um, well, let me thank you for, um, the prompts with your information today and we will make a decision on this one tomorrow as well as your other one and you will get notice. Uh, Thursday is a, um, a legal holiday, federal holiday, so you may not get this until maybe even Saturday.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right, I, I really appreciate all listening to my, um, presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
All righty, so I'm closing one forty six and we have a different owner on one forty eight. Is there a different owner on one forty nine? Same person, good.
Casey Tier. Your name's Casey Tier is the name. We saw them last week.
That lady?
Uh, no, it's a guy.
Okay. Did he come in? Okay. Okay.
Hello, this is Casey.
Okay, so this is Ms. Thompson calling from the Board of Equalization. How are you?
I'm good and wonderful. How are you doing?
Okay, so we have a full house today and, um, you have two items from on our agenda today, but we're gonna take them separately. Have you appeared, you, you've been before us before?
Uh, yeah, I was with y'all a couple weeks ago.
Okay, so I don't have to go through the deal about, you get to go first and then they hear, we hear from them and then, okay, so Thursday's a holiday. Our decision day is tomorrow, so because Thursday's a holiday, you will probably hear from us Saturday or Monday.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so my record indicate, this is a property row number one eight nine two three six zero zero zero. The, uh, assessor began valuing your property at nineteen nineteen East Second Street in Edmond at forty two thousand eight hundred seventy six plus and during the informal lowered it to thirty two million seven hundred eighty five thousand seven two seven. This is an apartment and many, apartment and many storage facility. You are asking twenty eight million five hundred thousand because you had an appraisal done in twenty twenty four. Am I correct about that?
Yes, ma'am.
But why didn't you have that appraisal done?
I'm not exactly sure why they had it done.
Okay, and I show that, um, the assessor's valuation is based on a, a median sales value of thirty two million seven plus and a mean of thirty three million seventy eight plus. Tell us how you arrived at the twenty eight five, if there are any factors other than informal appraisal.
Um, yes, so yeah, as you mentioned, uh, the client or the owner had a, conducted an appraisal, uh, that was completed as, uh, November first, twenty twenty four is when the data was, the report was actually completed, completed December twelfth, uh, twenty twenty four. Um, and yeah, as you mentioned, their value includes twenty eight point five million dollars. And then as far as my additional support, um, uh, the appraisal was about a hundred and fifty or five, a hundred and fifty or sixty pages. But towards the back of that, I included an income workup, um, you know, using the year end twenty four data. Just, uh, you know, adding some additional support. That starts on page one seventy, um, so of course, the very back, I provided my income package using the year end data. As the appraisal, I think, used the trellis follow that the November first. So it wasn't quite, you know, accurate or up to date, um, so I wanted to provide, you know, the full year end, year end income as one one. And based on that, the year end, uh, the actual indicated value of two seven point three three four three twenty. And then using a pro forma, um, using the December rents and, uh, actual expenses containing net market vacant use and reserves, uh, gets you a value of twenty eight million five hundred thousand, which is, um, which supports the appraisal.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Yeah, so, uh, we also ran a pro forma and came up with a similar value of twenty seven million one forty eight. However, we decided to put more weight on the sales, because we actually ran two different sales comp reports. One of which we used for value and the other one we just sent out for informational purposes. Um, the first one that we actually used to set the value had a median of thirty two million seven eighty five seven twenty seven. And the other one that we sent out for informational purposes was at thirty nine million one eighty one two sixty two. So we just went with the middle of those three values at thirty two million seven eighty five seven twenty seven.
So is there a reason why you didn't consider any income analysis?
Uh, it was the hearings officer's opinion that sales were more favorable than income analysis.
But you didn't try to combine them, sometimes you backswash to the average between the two.
Yes, so, uh, we ran two different comp reports and the income analysis and the lower income, oh, sorry, the lower sales report is what we cited.
This is.
I have a question.
This was the one I was telling you they had two sales. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I think I have, I'm not sure what, but I think I, you said there was two sales, uh, reports?
Yes.
Well, y'all sent me one of them. I'm not exactly sure what I'm looking at, but, um, this looks like there's six comparable sales that were included on those comp sheet. Um, y'all might, can I pull, can I pull it up on y'all's sheet, on y'all's screen, do you? I can show y'all.
You guys have a second comp sheet? It's the one I have only has four comps on it, so I'm assuming it's the second one that you should find.
Second one's a six. Right, this was a six comp.
Yeah, and I believe the one you're referencing is the one that they didn't use. They used the four comp report to do their evaluation.
Casey, Casey, you had a question, what was?
So basically, I was hoping to speed up, y'all pull up the report so I can show y'all, you know, the issue I have, but basically, my issue I have with the, the sales they provided is A, they're dated. At least the ones I was provided are, you know, there's only one, that was in twenty four, the other five, or in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty two. And additionally, uh, the adjustments that are being made to the sales comps are astronomical. So for example, um, on comp two, located at fourteen oh one North Midwest Boulevard, it is twelve and a half miles away, sold for sixteen million dollars. And they're doing an adjustment of twelve million dollars to make comparable to our property. And that's, that's a pretty much a trend for all the comps they use. Uh, I hardly even relatively say that the sales comps that we provided are even comparable or even a good indication of value, because the amount of adjustments that we made lead me to believe that they're not comparable.
That's the one you didn't use.
That is the one I didn't use. And I think that, uh, you pointed that out, that probably is the reason why we didn't use this, because those were older sales even though they were more comparable as building types were, and whatnot. We decided to use more recent sales, which are all in twenty three and twenty four with the four comp report.
Did you understand that, Casey?
They also had that fourteen oh one.
Uh, yes.
And what was the adjustment on that one?
What, what were the adjustments that were done on that one? Um, were they pretty ridiculous like the original one?
You need it. On the four sales? On the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the largest adjustment that I have is for quality at forty four percent. On that first one, on that first comfort, one fourteen oh one North Midwest.
That's just one example, but that's a lot of adjustments just to make for a comparable sale. Um. So yeah, that's my opinion, the sales they provided inflated, often inflated number. Um, so I would say the income approach, you know, to be more realistic and more accurate to the value of the property as a one one. And, you know, that's officially supported by the appraisal.
So I got another question. Is there a reason that you didn't consider the appraisal that they provided because it was a twenty twenty four appraisal?
Yes, uh, from what I see, we didn't consider, but we ran our own analysis. And we also took into consideration that it sold in two thousand nineteen for thirty seven million.
Um, you, is this the same buyer? You referenced that the buyer that purchased this in two thousand nineteen for thirty seven million, Casey?
Uh, I would believe so. I don't believe it sold since then, so I would say yes, I believe I do.
Okay.
Now, just that, that, you know, interest rates were, you know, two percent back then, now they're, you know, six or seven percent. So the markets choose, so it's a good amount.
Yeah, and did you come before us on this one last year? Because I did notice it dropped from thirty four million in twenty three to twenty nine five and twenty four. I was wondering if this was.
I could check.
That was an informal.
Well, let me find out before you give me a two second. It's good. Yes, and it was, it was settled informally by my colleague.
Set informally?
Informally, Misha Green.
And it was what?
It's a twenty nine five seventy nine nine seventy seven.
We're very, how do you have this rated? Good, fair condition?
Uh, it is
very good quality and good condition.
Okay.
The location.
I'm just curious as to why the appraisal is done. Uh, you know. Um, okay. So can you tell me why you think the property is worth less this year than it was last year?
Um, I can't answer that because I don't have last year's data um in front of me. But I would, you know, I presume either, you know, uh, obviously, you know, performance declined last year. Or, you know, obviously, interest rates continuously gone up, so I'm probably a little bit of.
Okay, do you think the interest rates have a a a bearing on a fair market value?
Uh, I would say yes, because interest rates are, you know, directly related to, you know, cap rates and what someone in finance for. So the higher the interest rate is, the more cost that, you know, finance, which typically lowers values.
Okay, so you're firm on your twenty eight five?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Yeah, just going off of what the appraisal was indicating.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing on V O E number one forty eight and we're gonna open the hearing on V O E one forty nine. Which is at one twenty eight three one North Stratford Drive, property roll number one four six eight six thirty one twenty five. The assessor began evaluation set at thirty three million five seventy six plus and dropped to twenty four million five hundred thousand black. You're asking for a valuation of nineteen million five hundred and ten thousand. And you're basically saying there's a high turnover rate, a high vacancy rate and a high delinquency rate. The median on sales comps conducted by the assessor had twenty five million four hundred thousand plus for the median and a mean of twenty five thousand nine hundred thousand plus. Okay, tell me how you arrived at nineteen million five hundred and ten, Casey?
Of course, thank you. Um, so basically, this is my straightforward last one, which is not, it wasn't the appraisal money.
Right.
However, we get out some uh prior data, so that's helpful. Um, you know, I just ran a income approach. Um, first, we have the actuals, twenty twenty four actuals. Um, uh, that indicates value of eleven million, one, uh, eleven million seven hundred thousand. Uh, the actuals do, and then the pro forma income, uh, using market vacancy of ten percent and actual expenses uh, indicate a value of nineteen point uh five million dollars. And as you mentioned, um, yeah, they have signs they are, um, they're having constant vacancy issues. Uh, expenses are through the roof, um, costs of utilities is going up. Um, they're having a lot of turnover with employees, which obviously costs additional money as well. Um. So they're just kind of going through some troubles of this property, um, as, you know, indicated by the actual value of eleven million dollars, indicated by the, you know, year end financials. And then additionally, I provided the end of the year, uh, income statement for support along with the rent roll, not indicated in the vacancy uh issue.
What, what, what was your fact?
Uh, so vacancy as a one one is eighty six, or sorry, the occupancy was eighty six percent. Um, as of one one twenty five, and then the client provided the average occupancy for twenty twenty four was seventy five percent. A little bit better than it was throughout the year last year. Um, however, you know, dealing with those issues caused, you know, a drop in income of course. Um, which is, you know, resulting in a value that I believe is lower than the current assumption.
Okay. We'll hear from you.
Yes, uh, so we do have to go off of market parameters. Um, market base vacancy rate gives an actual income value of twenty three point seven million according to our analysis.
Twenty three point?
Twenty three point seven million. And uh, sales support a value of twenty five point five million. So uh, we went with twenty four point five in this instance. It also did sell in twenty twenty one for twenty four million five hundred and twenty three thousand.
Twenty four?
Million five hundred and twenty three.
In twenty three?
In twenty twenty one.
Or twenty one?
But it was valued at twenty two million and twenty three and twenty four.
Okay, you get the last words, Casey.
Uh, yeah, um, I'm not exactly sure what sales they provided, which one they sent me informally. Um, but similar situ- situation as the last uh property or pretty much all apartments that I've seen um in the county. Uh, their sales comparables are um a little bit shoddy at best. Uh, again, these are all dated sales, uh, twenty two, twenty one, twenty three, uh, twenty two, twenty one. And again, they, the adjustments that are being made are crazy. So for example, comp four that I'm looking at at one thousand Northwest One Fifth Street, sold for four point five million dollars and they're adjusting uh, thirteen million dollars upwards to make comparable. Um, that's just one example. The next example, it sold for ten million, they're adjusting it eleven million. So the adjustments in there is um crazy, they're absolutely crazy. I don't believe they're indicative, indicative of the true market value. Um.
But it has, that's your problem.
So you said the first review is flawed.
The the income analysis that you did was based off of market and not actuals? Is that true?
Uh, and they, I think we just used market vacancy and kept everything else as actual.
And is there a reason you didn't consider their twenty five percent vacancy?
Yes, we have to go by market parameters. There is a a stipulation, I think, where we can consider lease whole or lease up costs, but we subtract that at the very end. We can make a slight adjustment to vacancy instead. Uh, the typical vacancy for apartments is between five and ten percent. I think he used, he used ten percent there.
Yeah, I would just say that the only difference between our our approaches is the expenses used initially. Um, I guess like you said, uh, they're using the ten percent vacancy and two percent in collections, so that's pretty accurate, what I'm using. And then, I guess, the only difference is gonna be the the amount of expenses used. I use the actual expenses, which is about fifty five percent. And they are using
Forty seven point one six.
Two percent. And uh, I'm going to have to correct that income sheet. So slightly different. But then I take a slight lease up cost of three hundred thousand to the difference in vacancy. But even without the lease up cost, it's mine to get a value of nineteen thousand.
Well, in the H B, he used the fourteen percent. Okay.
And you said you used pretty much everything that he used except for vacancy.
Yeah, but he didn't, he only used ten.
Because I do have forty seven point sixteen percent expenses here, and he has fifty five.
Which are actual. And relatively reasonable, those are, those are, you know, with everything going up, G L D wise and hospital employees. That's pretty, pretty in line. But I'd say it's a little high compared to, you know, others, but, you know, not crazy.
Okay, you get the last word. Is that all?
That's it for me. That's all. I appreciate your time.
Okay, you'll hear from us shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bye. Okay, so we're gonna meet tomorrow. We'll have two days left. Um, minus the ones we settled on. Okay, are you guys just about finished?
I think so. I believe there's only three left.
Only three left?
I I believe so, but.
Including the ones next, next week?
Yes, that that, Dings was dropped. Uh, there is a uh Sheraton Hotel. There is a Walmart Neighborhood Market and there is a, another apartment.
Those are the ones, so you're saying the three that are set is it for you?
Yes, we, the deadline was yesterday for the, for the fifteen days.
And you still haven't heard from business professional?
Business person?
Business, business person.
No, I haven't, but I could go and talk with them today and and let you know.
Tomorrow, okay. You haven't heard anything from, okay. Okay, uh, so we're gonna meet tomorrow for decision day. Anything further? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?